All right, let's bring this meeting to order for Wednesday, August 9th, 2023, at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Council Member Hall, who unfortunately called in sick tonight, so we wish him a speedy recovery. And the invocation tonight will be led by World Missionary Church of God. And I have a quick little bio here for Missionary Matthew Joe from the World Missionaries Society Church of God. Matthew is the branch church manager and assistant overseer, who has been a member for 20 years. He received his degree from, believe it or not, the World Mission Society Church of God Theology Program. One of the missionary Matthews responsibilities is leading the local ASEZ division within the Church of God. And for those of you who might be asking what ASEZ stands for, it essentially stands for Saving the Earth From A to Z. These young adults and university students have the power to help change despair and current frustration into future happiness through many different social and environmental volunteer activities. These young adults hope to unite students, communities, and governments worldwide to create real and lasting change. The most recent Forrester Creek cleanup here in Santee was organized by volunteers of ASEZ from the Church of God. We thank you for being here once again. And tonight, in your prayer, we hope that you pray for our country, our state, and the city of Santee, of course. And followed by the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. And let's see, I think I'm going to have Jerry Serpa lead us in that tonight. So please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you don't want to do it, don't come.
To our Almighty God, Heavenly Father Christ An Sang Hong, and Heavenly Mother New Jerusalem, we come before you, giving all thanks, glory, and praises forever and ever. Thank you for giving your blessing on this beautiful city of Santee that has prospered and has become an exemplary community. As we gather today, we invoke of your continuing blessing of prosperity on this city and all leading council members and leaders. We ask of your guidance to take care of each other and of the citizens of Santee. Where there is no hope, let us give hope. Where there is no love, let us give love as you loved us first. And let us love each other as family members of the Glover Village, so that we may be able to share the true hope and joy to the people in this community and the whole world. Thank you so much for allowing us to gather together today with the council members and Mayor and Vice Mayor and all communities in Santee. Please let them be blessed continuously, and let us be healthy, both physically and spiritually, so that we may be able to know our true God, our Father and Mother. I pray for all this in the new name of Jesus Christ An Sang Hong. Amen.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business will be recognition of the World Mission Society Church of God for Forrester Creek Cleanup Event. And Dustin's going to go down and he's going to make the presentation, and then we're going to see the video first or after?
Video first or?
We're going to see the video first. Oh, wait. That's what I thought. You're in charge right now, Dustin.
I got it. All right, I guess I get at least get Matthew Joe up here. If everybody wants to come up or not, it's up to you, sir. Yes, sir. How are you today?
Good, thank you.
Very good.
Come on down.
So where's Superman at? That's what I wanted to know. So the reference to that, you guys, is I was actually at the cleanup back in April. You'll see a video here, I'm sure. I was at the cleanup in April, and we had different groups, and my group leader, well, his nickname was Superman, so.
Real quick. Move in.
Yeah, come in tight, you guys. Tight as you can. Get everybody together for the camera here. So I'm going to read the recognition here from the city of Santee. So the city of Santee Certificate of Recognition Presented to the World Mission Society Church of God. The city of Santee wishes to thank the church members for holding a large volunteer cleanup event at Forrester Creek. Your hard work was tremendous help improving our environment as well as the natural habitat for local wildlife. So I'm going to present this to you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's say a few words.
Thank you, everyone here, the mayor and vice mayor and all council members here. Especially, it's perfect because he was there when we had a cleanup together, so he helped us and then moved to the activities. So always, thank you so much for doing all your works for the city of Santee and everyone. Thank you so much. And we prepared a video together to watch. So yeah, we want to explain how we did this event. But can we take a picture together? Yeah.
Ready for the video? You guys ready for the video?
Roll them.
After the picture. Okay. I think same as last time, we got to take it from an angle. Let's do this.
There you go.
Squeeze a little bit and I'll back it up just a little bit. Ready? One, two, three.
Ascend.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, and you have something else prepared, right?
Yes.
Please come up and take care of that. Should have kept it when you had it.
Thank you so much for your time. As we share, the title is ASEZ, Save the Earth From A to Z, so by doing good works. As the city of Santee, all council members and mayor and vice mayor, everyone does a really, really good job to make our city better, so we also want to participate together by supporting through our action, especially ASEZ's organization of young adult university students. So we do our best to support our city to be better and clean. And we prepare a song through five Korean brothers. They are all the way from South Korea, so the title is A Person Who Changes the World. So it shows, when you listen to the lyrics, we can realize that the person's role is very important, not only just words, but through our action. We must take our action. So it is a short song, so yeah, so please enjoy. The first verse is in Korean, and they prepared the second verse in English, so please enjoy. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We prepare a message to you, everyone, the city of Santee or all communities. Thank you so much for working, your hard work. We prepare a message because we love everyone. So everyone, are you ready? We just stand up. Let us do "We Love You" three times. Are you ready? One, two, three.
We love you. We love you. We love you.
Hey, Matthew, you get to be careful you don't lose these young men to America's Got Talent, because I pushed the golden buzzer.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Now we have to go to work. Who wants to do that? All right, let's go to the calendar. Any items to be added, deleted, or reordered on the agenda, Vice Mayor?
I want to pull two items.
All right.
Five and nine. For discussion.
Five and nine. And I don't have any. Dustin?
No, sir.
Ms. McNellis?
Not for me, sir.
Okay. City Manager?
Nothing, sir.
City Attorney? Yeah, City Clerk?
Yes, sir. I have a speaker on one, two, three, and four.
Thank you. And so do I have a motion to accept the rest of the consent calendar?
Is there any left? Hold on. Yes, motion to approve consent.
I have a motion to approve, and I have a second.
Second.
Come on. There we go.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Let's go to item number one first. Speaker's slip.
Truth. I do not know goodbye in Korean, only "Kamsamidana hanaseo." Okay, it's truth. That's hello and thank you. When is City Clerk Annette going to give up on this item? Because I will not. And when will I run out of new words to say about it? Never, hopefully. I always fear that I will, and then at the last minute, something comes right into my head. But what if I read the exact same speech every single meeting? Then we could all memorize it and say it together in unison. Wouldn't that be fun? It's almost like saying "we love you," you know? So for passing ordinances and resolutions by title alone, another example of something that sounded good by title alone was the National Defense Authorization Act, an act that claims that the federal government or the military can indefinitely detain people. Guantanamo doesn't sound so good in the title, does it? But it was hidden in the details of the contents. That's why it's important to hear at least some of the contents of ordinances and resolutions. No waving, no streamlining, no collecting $200, only ethical gel, for those who continue, once again, to approve this item despite my easy solution of reading a short summary of every ordinance and resolution before they pass. And consider this, what if I actually write my summary idea into legal language for you guys? Then you don't have to pay any consultants or staff, and you don't have to worry about a 5% salary increase. I could hand it over, one day slip it under the diocese table, and it won't be good. Or I could work under the table for the city, because I heard that I'm here more often than certain staff, so maybe I could get the 5% raise too and make some positive change with it. Actually, somebody offered me a job yesterday. It sounded like a different city. But then I'd be called a traitor, because you know, everyone in government is a bad guy. That's what I've heard. I do not subscribe to that belief, though, as this tends to be the only item that I actually strongly disagree about, which is very good. But if you, so if council members oppose, you know, then it would increase the chances that we could all agree on the whole agenda. That's something to consider. That and making sure the public knows what every ordinance and resolution is really about. Thank you.
Motion to approve item number one.
I have a motion and second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item number two, please.
Truth? What do you know? I don't know why staff allows the minutes to sit collecting dust for so many months, unapproved. Is it because I have given so many speeches that it's just too much to keep up with? I totally get that. I don't know if I've said this here, but I actually love reading minutes. I noticed Rob's always the one making the motion for the remainder of the consent, and for these minute dates, he had the most motions at 12:00. The closest was Laura with half that amount. I think that means Rob wants to go home more than anyone else. Anyway, some of the May 10th minutes involve a cleanup job, not inaccurate, just missing some pieces. But it was a day I remember vividly, because I didn't even want to go, and I was unhappy about words I heard in the previous meeting, so I came with a little extra fire. Sorry, not sorry. And then later that month, somebody made a video, including most of my speeches from the night, so everything got a second life, and it all worked out for the best. I'm very glad, because I actually learned a lot. And I'll tell you guys, this was the very first place I ever spoken person, and probably the only, only the second time in my adult life that I even did public speaking. So you guys are in my test zone, is what I'm saying. So thank you for putting up with me, for better or for worse, and I mean that. On these days, you won't have to, but at the same time, Santee is one of the only city councils on Wednesday. You guys are so lucky. My favorite part of the minutes is quote, "Council Member McNellis announced it was Council Member Trotter's birthday, and led the room in a 'Happy Birthday' song," end quote. It was fun. It got some singing in there. I know you like to sing. The May 24th minutes definitely got a cleanup job under non-agenda to the point of denial. Not accurate, but I think that works in certain people's favor. Lucky them. And I'm not against that, actually. I really mean lucky them, because we reap all cruel words sown, and sometimes even words that were but jokes, and nobody knows the latter better than me. The June 28th minutes under non-agenda has a misspelling under letter D with the word complimented. You could check that. It was nice to read the memory of Rob complaining about MTS and nobody paying for rides. And guess what, Rob? The percent of people actually pay. It's a whopping 21%. We know what that means. Without the federal government, MTS doesn't even exist. And the minute said John spoke about greenhouse emissions, not the gaseous kind, apparently. You know, the hot air certain people on, say, Sanddagger full of sometimes. I still would like to see that a speaker's position on an item is included in the minutes for the public record. Positions could be an option on the speaker slips and noted in the minutes. Thank you.
Motion to approve. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number three, please.
Truth?
All right, we got 49 pages worth of payment and demands. It's quite a lot to scroll through. We had over $31,000 to Eben Moser and Skaggs LP, who are based in San Francisco, for applicable environmental consultancy work regarding the land-grabbing multiple-species conservation program. And this was fun. The band Overboard got $1,500 to perform at the summer concerts. Betamax got $2,000, while CB Music Productions got $2,500. Lucky Cassie. There are people that like her. Anyone who doesn't know about Lorena Gonzalez Fletcher's industry ruining AB5, just ask a musician, they'll tell you all about it. T-shirts for the event cost over $1,500, and I would estimate that to be about 50 shirts. $99 for a duplicate application from Dilly's Ice Cream Truck. I looked at their website, and it's an old-school bus repainted with a pink ice cream cone on it. I don't understand why there was a duplicate application, you know? It almost makes me want to scream for ice cream, you know? It's nice to know that those July 4th fireworks cost $17,500, because I really hope everybody appreciates it. That's quite a lot of money for fireworks. Could go to Mexico next time, maybe. I didn't know that LAFCO costs money. Learned something, over $21,000. Ron and John attended the ICSC conference for a couple of thousand dollars in hotels and transportation, and a rep from Real Estate Services Monopolis, Cushman, and Wakefield spoke. Over $3,700 was wasted on the League of California Cities with their stack-and-pack-and-no-car totalitarian ideas. And I definitely don't approve of poor Sicron going to the Smart Cities Connect Convention, unless it's to oppose what's coming, because it's certainly not a better world they're building. It's a digitally-connected and controlled world. One of their sponsors of last year's convention was Ubiquia, the inevitable maker of the city of San Diego's $3.5 million stupid smarts camera streetlights. Spy, sorry, spy camera streetlights, very important, which everybody opposes but are being implemented anyway. The Smart Cities Connect Convention has pushed AI, digital twins to experiment with cities using models, water controls, 5G internet sensors everywhere emitting harmful radiation, self-driving cars that have had countless studies prove that they will kill people even at slow speeds, and useless inefficient public transit like MTS. They also want a commercial metasphere, innovation directors, smart private 5G municipal networks, and laser-based distributed fiber sensor systems everywhere. They even admitted to using streetlights to fund smart city initiatives, as in San Diego spy cameras are just an excuse for more control. So I'm very glad that this single little charge for the convention was in this item, because this is going to require a deeper dive and a future expose. Thank you for that.
Motion to approve.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item number four, please.
Truth?
It could have been anybody coming up. The Legal Services for June. I should point out that labor employee benefits have racked up over $9,700, and who knows how many hours in closed-session time, right, guys? Tonight included, I'm pretty sure. I think Santee is up there on the closed-session amount record books, from my experience. The County Affordable Housing Coalition costs over $1,600. And how many homes are they building with this money they keep getting, because it looks a lot like none? The American Destruction Plan Act sucked up another $943. And overall, there's been over $1 million spent in one year's time for legal services. And I actually think that's not too bad, because it could take one lawsuit to rack up that much, so not bad for Santee. Thank you.
Motion to approve. Please vote. Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, that takes us to item number five. That's the adoption of a resolution accepting Town Center Community Park West Field One Improvements. CIP 2022-40, project as complete and finding the action is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Well, thank you. I asked to pull this item not because I disagree with the softball fields being built, obviously, and having lighting at night, and you know, the sticker shock is obviously something we all discussed ad nauseam. But the real reason I pulled this item is I think the construction site before map and completion map are really telling. You know, we have two softball fields where there used to be one field. They're lighted now, which means that there's a lot of kids using these fields, but the parking situation hasn't changed in that area. And I've brought this up before, but I just want to say publicly that we really need to do something to address parking in this area, because what's happening is a snowball effect. There's not enough parking by the baseball fields or softball fields for the kids. So then they go over to Sportsplex, which push people from Sportsplex down to the YMCA, and then it pushes people into the neighborhood streets. So there, perhaps there's a solution. There's a dirt lot on the other side of the new ASA field that's not being used. I've been told that it's been looked at for future development, which is fine, but in the meantime, perhaps we can cut out a curb and have dirt parking right there across the street from the ASA field. I do know that Sportsplex homerun fence is right there. We might have to put, you know, a taller screen up there, so a homerun ball doesn't hit a parking spot. But we really need to work on a solution now, instead of just saying, well, you know, we built this other field and it's being used substantially more, and then not have a solution for parents and kids to park safely. And that's, I motion to approve the item, but that was my comment on it.
Any other comments? Any other speaker slips?
No speakers, sir.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
That takes us to item number nine, which is adoption of a resolution. That takes us to item number nine, which is adoption of a resolution authorizing City Manager to execute a professional services agreement with Jet Advertising LLC to design and build a new custom website for the city of Santee.
That is also me. This is a very important piece of technology update for the city of Santee. It's, if you try to use our website and search for something, you know it's cumbersome. Probably, half the time, it doesn't work. So we know we need to do this. We all have agreed we needed to invest the money, but what I wanted to see with this is a scope of work that Jet Design or Jet Advertising is agreeing to. Um, I think that professional service agreement and technology professional services agreements are different. And what we found in our professional services agreement with Tyler is we're missing some tech support that we really needed at Go Live for our staff. And I'm not blaming staff. I'm just saying that we should have more in the contract, and without me being able to review the contract, I'm not comfortable just moving this forward on consent without reviewing the contract and making sure that the tech support that we should have is in the contract.
Madam Vice Mayor, we do have a staff presentation, if you would like to see that does outline the scope of work, because we knew you were curious about that.
Um, I think all the council members should be able to review it, so I'm not willing, for me, I don't want to approve this tonight until we have a chance to review the contract. You can give the presentation if you want, and then we can come back and approve it. Give us some more time. That's where I am. Wherever you guys are is fine.
I'd like to hear the presentation.
Agreed.
Always.
Get situated. All right, we'll make this brief, too. We don't want to bore you to death. All right. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight. I appreciate that. So currently, as we discussed a little bit, our current website's hard to navigate. Well, that might be because there's over 799 pages. As most of you know, the search function does not work properly. Any updates or significant changes come with a hefty price tag from our current website vendor. And all of the templates are very restrictive. Our current website CMS, our content management system, is not user-friendly and hard to use. Our last major redesign was in 2016, with a minor update in 2017 totaling $51,500. Our current annual subscription and hosting packages are totaling in about $14,500 a year. Redesigning the website will potentially lower this annual cost. Goals for the new website. The custom CMS offers scalability, high performance, features tailored to the city's needs, allows for a unique design, personalization, and increased security. Will have one-of-a-kind design, not a template that every other city has. The search engine will be run off of Google Search API. The search function will follow Google procedures and indexing to pull internal website information when people search something for our website. So a functioning search option. We will also ensure pages are built out with a strong keywords and tags and SEO or search engine optimization. The RWD is critical because 70% of the people that visit our city website are using their mobile devices, so that's huge. Currently, the website looks completely different on a cell phone versus the desktop version. Both of these designs have to be updated separately as well, which is pretty time-consuming for staff. Having an ASP.net website hosted through GovCloud and SQL will allow us to have better backup, bundle pricing with Microsoft Office 365, as you guys will see that that's slowly being integrated right now, and faster load times. In addition, we will own the ASP code, so future website upgrades might be less expensive and could potentially be performed in-house without any additional costs. So here's a little bit more about the vendor we're wanting to work with. They're a marketing and advertising company, so they have a little different take and understanding on what we need in a website. They understand the importance and functionality and the role a website has in a community. They have worked with park districts, foundations, nonprofits, and a multitude of other companies over their 10 years in business. We have a budget of $100,000 in the CIP for FY 2324 to cover all new website-related costs. This includes the redesign, hosting, third-party integrations, for example, like an ADA compliance checker, a form creator, and eBlast service. These expenses will be in addition to the normal incurred costs for the current website vendor, because we'll have to keep them up simultaneously. But the good news is that when the hosting isn't live, it'll be a little bit cheaper. Um, let's hear, the actual redesign will not exceed $88,000. After doing the website as live, our annual expenses to operate the city website are anticipated to be under $14,500 a year. Thousand, uh, 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 $14,500 a year, which we're currently spending. And then I'm sure you guys might be interested about the app. You know how great our current app works, which it does not. The old, uh, our new app was included with our online permitting system package. We anticipate the app to go live on August 29th. The app will stream and funnel everyone through the website, as it's critical to push through traffic to the website in all in one place, so we're not tracking and updating information in two different locations. So Laura, this is a little bit more about the scope of work, but we can provide you more detail on that as well. So here are the six phases of the project with the hours broken out. So the project research and planning phase will include meetings with each department and city council members, if they're interested, to map out what their future pages need to include and what they would like them to look like, along with establishing a concrete timeline and site map outline and flow charts. The design phase is the design of the homepage, the mobile design, interior pages, and additional responsive layouts. The development and outbuild, the development and build-out. Once designs are approved, the vendor will start building the actual pages and integrate everything into a custom CMS or content management system. Custom features, these are things like Google Search API, newsletter, alert banners, kind of those key specific features that we want. Build-out and populate, this will create and populate the main navigation pages, access database, and import pages from the former page. The marketing team will have a large undertaking with this component, as we will be very involved because they will not, the vendor will not be handling the 799 pages themselves. We want to make sure everything comes over correctly and looks the way we want it, so we will have a huge piece of that. And then the launch phase will include a check and proof of the site pre-launch, final cross-browser testing, create redirects, monitor analytics, and training. So that's totaling 567 hours, which is about six months of work at 40 hours a week just for the vendor. And this is the proposed timeline. So research and planning, September 2023. We want to launch this on the first of September. Um, then we'll have a few months there for the custom web design and content management system build-out. And then we anticipate the website will go live or be public-facing in June 2024. So if there's any more specific questions, I know you want a detailed list, Laura, of the scope of work, which we can provide.
Yeah. And how many employees do they have on their team?
So I don't have an exact, yeah. I think their whole company, it's a smaller company. I believe they have about 10 to 15 employees, so it's a smaller group. I don't have an exact number that we'll be working with, but I can look that up.
Yeah, for what I'd like to see is who, you know, with a small company especially, I like the idea of customization, but then you also run the risk of they might have too many projects and they might not have somebody dedicated to us. And, um, do you have a, I mean, I, it's already a long lead time to have two websites running with anticipated, you know, of June 2024. To me, that seems extremely long. And if resources get stretched on their end or our end, that can drag out. So I'm hesitant about the word anticipated. You know, I like hard dates and contracts.
I know.
And penalties if they don't make it.
We do in the contract list out a dedicated project manager that they guarantee will be available to us. Um, and they will be, we have written into the contract, you know, technical support, training for our staff with the new CMS system, you know, helping us work through the kinks once we do go live. That is all included in there.
And then the other thing that's important in a tech contract, most contracts, but especially a tech contract, is you don't want one project manager in September, and then you're six months through, and they say, oh, I need to pull this person to this project. So you get a new person. You'll spend, you know, weeks getting them up to speed with where you're at, and that delays you as well. So, um, I like in a contract like this that whoever is assigned, unless they leave their company, is assigned all the way through, through Go Live.
Okay, we can make sure that that's clear in there, but I know that there's a statement in the professional services agreement.
Yeah, I mean, that, there's a provision that says there's a designated person, and they can't change that person without the city's written consent. And that's a standard provision in our agreement.
Any other questions? Counsel?
Yeah, can you go back one slide, please? So the launch, the 45 hours, as we've learned with other software situations, that training part, that, as you stated, that's a week and one day of work. But is that billed on a true per-hour basis? Or is it, all right, we're going to have this day and this day, and whoever wants to can ask us questions, when it may take a couple of days before those questions are really vetted out? And didn't need that time during that day, but we need a time now. So is that, I want to make sure that we're, it's billed hourly, not on a scheduled day type of basis?
Correct, it is billed hourly. And they provided a range, this is the top end of the range for hours that their staff would spend in these phases.
So this is the highest range of hours?
Yes.
Okay, so they anticipated it being less hours?
A range, yeah, a lower end and a higher end, because some of their clients require more in certain areas, so.
Well, that doesn't make me feel better.
No.
That went the wrong direction.
No, it doesn't.
But I appreciate the honesty.
And what about programming costs? So say, you know, we launch, and it's a very limited amount of hours for that, and then there's problems, or maybe some things you want to enhance. What's the cost for that post-Go Live?
Right, we are in discussion with them about bringing on a retainer or doing another amendment to bring them on for another year to make sure that we're smooth sailing if there are any tweaks or things that need to be adjusted.
There will be.
I know.
And typically with a, like a tech contract, the first three months is actually built into the, the first three months post-Go Live is built into the contract, the initial contract. So you have it upfront, and you're not, I mean, that's typically what I see.
Okay. I'll make a note about that.
Well, this is not my expertise by any means, so I'm actually going to defer to my colleague and follow her lead on this one. If she thinks it's not ready, then I'm going to trust her opinion.
So let's, so we just make a motion to hold off on this for now and have it brought back with more details in the contract after review?
I don't think we need to do a motion, just give direction to staff, bring it back. Does that work, Sean?
You would just continue it to the next meeting when staff has it ready and won't bring it back.
Right, and I don't think you need a motion, you can sort of make one, but the direction is clear, I think. And, uh, you know, when it's brought back, we'll bring back the full agreement, so you can see the full scope of work and all the details.
Yeah. And I'd rather not say continue to the next meeting, because if we don't have all those documents in order, then we're in the same place again. So let's just go ahead and table this until another day and bring it back.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel.
You're welcome. All right. That takes us to non-agenda public comment.
I have three speakers, sir.
Please call the first.
First speaker is Nick Eustace. Eustace?
Go ahead and give us your name when you come, so we understand exactly what it is. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel, and City Manager Best. I'm Nick Eustace, a longtime resident of Vista and a licensed owner in two Colorado cannabis businesses. I'm here today representing Joint Ventures, a California cannabis manufacturing startup that I formed with my uncle and his business partner for 40 years. They have been successful enterprise software entrepreneurs in the insurance, real estate, and automobile dealership markets. We are considering opening a cannabis manufacturing facility in Santee and are interested in the interpretation of ordinance 602 and the cannabis business update that is being worked on by city staff. We have posed several questions about 602 to the staff, but there does not appear to be a way we can get questions answered and inconsistencies cleared up. I'd like to respectfully request that the council provides some way for aspiring cannabis businesses to gain clarity on the intent of the city. I have three points that illustrate our concerns. First, 602 defines micro-business as a business doing at least three of the following: indoor cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, or retail. We're only proposing to do two: manufacturing and distribution to resellers. Section 7.04.100 limits licenses to four retailers but has no limits on testing labs and non-store micro-businesses. We don't fall into either category, so it's unclear what license restrictions would apply. Second, 7.04.320 security measures discusses perimeter fencing and exterior lighting. It seems to presuppose a freestanding building on a lot under control of the applicant and does not seem to consider a unit in an industrial commercial condo where exterior perimeter fencing is impractical and not likely permitted. What is the city's stance on enclosed and secure locations like industrial commercial condos? We have similar concerns with the loitering provisions, since other neighboring businesses will have operating times that might differ from ours, and the required mosquito audible devices could be a nuisance to our neighbors. We'd like some direction regarding industrial condo use within the city limits. Third, an email response from city staff contained the following: "Please keep in mind the GIS map listed is merely an initial informational tool. Final determinations on locations and buffers will occur during the application process. Not knowing where our use is allowed makes it impossible to acquire property or a lease, which is a prerequisite to the application process. We're hopeful that you can provide certainty as to when such locations and buffers will be codified and available pre-application. We have several other clarifications we'd like to get that further highlight the need for a mechanism for discussion. Thank you for your time and consideration. I have a printed copy of my remarks that I can provide if that will be of use, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have."
Thank you. Go ahead and leave your questions down here at the end, and we'll do a follow-up on that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Truth?
We'll take some.
First, I want to give a shout-out to David. Hope you're doing all right. Dustin, I love signs more than poor Sick Ron, so I've got another sign idea for you to financially shoot down. Seriously, I actually think Santee needs more directional signs. I got this idea from walking around El Cajon. For example, a sign to point people in the direction of this city hall, it's really hard to find. And a sign to point people in the direction of the Trolley Square and public transit that everybody uses, okay? Come on. And I just finished watching this Sandag YouTube video entitled "Sandag Webinar on AB 43 and AB 1983," or sorry, 38, Changes to Speed Limit Setting Practices. A government entity can now use both bills to lower speed limits anywhere by up to 10 miles per hour. All they have to do is either label an area high pedestrian or bike and/or use an area with high-traffic accidents as an excuse. They can also label an area "safety corridor" and take up to one-fifth of the total roadway, or even one-fifth of all public government-controlled streets or highways. Caltrans is working with extremist UC Berkeley to create methods to implement more speed-limit reductions. Vicente Romero from San Francisco's Municipal Transportation Agency pushed their Vision Zero culture change of 20 miles per hour to as low as 15 miles per hour on roads. They even label areas as senior zones as well as narrow highways as alleys in order to reduce speed limits to 25 miles per hour. And they're planning over 118 safety corridors every one-fourth of a mile, with well over 300 signs at a cost of $500 each. All of these changes use the excuse of safety, but the presenter couldn't even provide an estimate of any decreases in fatalities. And despite all these expensive totalitarian measures, people are still driving the same speeds, so the city's also trying to put speed radars everywhere. They're doing anything they can to get slower-driving speeds all over the state, to dance and advise driving through methods including complete streets, high-injury networks, traffic calming, road diets, active transportation networks, and alley, school, senior, commercial, or safety corridors. And all of these techniques have been done without neighborhood surveys or ordinances, as in they don't care what all over the state, to dance and advise driving through methods including complete streets, high-injury networks, traffic calming, road diets, active transportation networks, and alley school, senior commercial, or safety corridors. And all of these techniques have been done without neighborhood surveys or ordinances, as in, they don't care what the people think. They just don't want us driving. It's very Sandag, very Hassan. Good riddance to him. So everyone, watch out for AB 43 and AB 1938. And I want to, just in general, I want to encourage people to speak up more. When comparing this city council of Santee to the corruption found in, say, Chula Vista, people are very fortunate here. But it only stays that way with civic engagement. It's not easy to come to a microphone and speak coherently, or eloquently, or even funny, sometimes. But with time, it actually does get easier, and it is possible to make change on the local level.
Next speaker, John Hasek.
Hi, City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and of course, City Council. Speaking of making change on a local level, perfect entry point. So this is our last week of collecting donations for Buddy's backpacks. We have had over 15 donation sites that have participated in this city, and in El Cajon and La Mesa combined. So the Santee Copse Corner, Santee Lakes, also Starbucks, Santee Library, Santee YMCA, New Frontier, Meadowbrook, Coast Guard Energy Institute, Ospelix, Step-by-Step, Expressions Dance, Mission Federal Credit Union, Santee Community Center Senior Group, East County Schools Federal Credit Union, Dino's Pub, Three Frog Brewery, Santee VFW, Barnes &amp; Noble, Home Bank, and a few other just private collections. To me, that's amazing when you speak about making an impact on a local level. So for those that are wanting to donate, we still have that ability to do that until August 15th. But the real reason that I'm here is to personally invite the City Council to both the assembly and the giveaway. So the assembly is going to happen in Meadowbrook on the 18th, starting at 11:00 a.m. Probably will take about an hour, hour and a half, I suspect. Again, that's on the 18th, starting at 11:00 a.m. at Meadowbrook. The giveaway is at Rio Seco Elementary School. It is going to be done on the 19th. The giveaway itself will start at 9:00. However, the volunteers, we're asking them to come at 8:30. That's when I would ask you guys to come, because it gives us some time to kind of like figure out where to place everyone and kind of like put that in place. There's something that's unique about this program. This is the eighth year doing Buddy's Backpack. I think we're going to have, with everything that I suspect will work in place, we'll have close to 1,000 backpacks again to give away. There's, I was saying to the Vice Mayor and a dear friend, there's something magical about this program. People come out of the woodwork and do just incredibly kind things. I've seen it in just the donation side of it, and I also see it in the giveaway. In that legacy, I was, when you can name something after somebody that embodies the good of the community, that makes me proud to live in this community. That makes me proud of the people that live here, and I want to thank you so much for supporting it.
Thank you.
No further speakers, sir.
Thank you. That takes us to item number 10, which is a resolution approving the annual levy of special tax within the CSA 69 reorganization boundary for FY 2023, 2024 and collection on the property tax roll. Heather?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. This will be the inaugural annual levy of Santee Lakeside Emergency Medical Services Authority, or SLMSA, ambulance transport special tax. So the City of Santee and the Lakeside Fire Protection District are successor agencies to the former County Service Area 69, or CSA 69. Upon dissolution, the City of Santee and Lakeside Fire Protection District created SLMSAs. SLMSA assumed administrative oversight of the former CSA 69 jurisdictional boundary, plus an additional area added to into the boundary of Lakeside Fire Protection District. This new boundary was referred to by LAFCO as CSA 69 reorganization boundary, and is now the SLMSA boundary. In their capacity as successors to CSA 69, Lakeside Fire Protection District and the City of Santee are authorized to assess levy and/or collect within their respective boundaries taxes and assessments levied and/or collected by the former CSA 69. Santee and Lakeside Fire Protection District will set the special tax for their territories within the CSA 69 reorganization boundary, or SLMSA boundary, moving forward. The combined assessment within the CSA 69 reorganization boundary is projected to be 3.2 million. The City of Santee will assess 1.3 million, Lakeside Fire Protection District 1.9 million, and then there was a 7.71 CPI applied to fiscal year 2324. The total of 3.2 million will be included in the SLMSA budget and will be split evenly between the two agencies per the JPA agreement. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the annual levy of a special tax within its territory within the CSA 69 reorganization boundary for fiscal year 2324 and the collection on the property tax roll.
Would you like me to call the speaker, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Truth?
So I just, in general, I thought it was nice to see a tax not contained within the consent calendar. I very much appreciate that. And to have a special tax elucidated, which that word was in the item, and I liked that, I don't know, that word just caught my elucidate. I wanted to make sure I knew what it meant, to be clear. So good riddance to county control, and hello instead to SLMSA. I have nothing against that at all. The only unfortunate part is that the U.S. Department of Labor stat says that the new levy tax should be increased by 7.71%. There's that nasty inflation again. Maybe that's the inflation rate. We're going to find out. Taxes rolling over $1.3 million in the City of Santee, and that is called the cost of doing business. And because there's no majority protest filed, I think I'm the only one here, and I'm not even really in protest. So everybody, you better hold on to your property tax rolls. I'm not really against it. I guess I'm neutral. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the only speaker left. I want to make one thing very clear. I don't know if you want to speak to this, or if you are, but this is not a new tax. There's the same tax been collected every year, and it just has to come to us now so that we can operate things, so.
It gets to come to us now, not has to.
Yeah, it comes to us instead of the county.
Yeah.
Well, that's what, I guess that's my point that I'm making. Thank you for clearing that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to item number 11, which is a public hearing for development review permit, DR 2022-5, for a three-story apartment complex consisting of 54 units and related site improvements on a 2.45-acre vacant lot located at 701 Park Center Drive in the Town Center specific plan area with a medium-high-density residential R14 land use designation and finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to the Class 32 infill exemption. Michael?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, members of council. The proposal is a 54-unit apartment complex. The site is about 300 feet south of Mass Boulevard, as highlighted in this aerial. The site is within our Town Center specific plan area, and it has a land use designation of R14, which is our high-medium-density residential density land use designation, which allows for a range of 14 to 22 dwelling units per acre. The site is surrounded by a mixture of commercial, multifamily, and single-family uses. Immediately surrounding the site is an auto repair shop to the north, the Addison Apartment Complex to the east, a single-family home also to the east, and the Edgemore Hospital to the south. Immediately adjoining the site to the west, of course, is Park Center Drive and Wood Glen Vista Creek. Here is another perspective of the site. This is looking north, northwest onto the site. The Edgemore Hospital is shown on the south end of the site there. Here is a photograph, the error from Park Center Drive. The error shows the perspective, so it's looking east onto the site. This is the site plan of the proposed site. The site will have a courtyard, and most of the apartments will be configured around this courtyard. The apartments will be three stories in height, and there will also be an additional building. So a total of seven buildings would be constructed. One building would be, of course, highlighted here, would be along Park Center Drive. Access would be from one drive approach along Park Center Drive, so that's a new entrance being proposed, and of course, a circular driveway, driveway along the entire perimeter of the site. A six-foot masonry block wall would be provided on the northern property line of the site to provide a buffer between the adjoining commercial uses to the north. And then an eight-foot masonry wall would be provided on the eastern property line to provide a buffer for those existing residential uses, particularly a single-family residential property. The remainder of the site, they would leave the existing tubular steel tubing on the southern perimeter of the site, adjoining the Edgemore Hospital, and then the front of the site would be open with just landscaping provided. The courtyard would be enhanced with turf area, some furniture, shade structure, picnic area, fire pits, barbecues, as shown in these renderings, and a dog run as well. The site, as I mentioned, the main part of the development would be centrally located in an apartment block surrounding this courtyard at three levels. All the units would be walk-up units, accessible by stairs, so each unit would be a single story. And here is a rendering of the proposed central portion of the development around this courtyard. And then along Park Center Drive, there would be one additional building, which would be designed as townhome style. Unlike the other units, these would have, they'd be individual vertical units with individual stairwells within the unit. And this is to provide a transition between Park Center Drive and the apartment complex, so that visually from Park Center Drive, you don't see onto a large apartment block and a field of parking, but it has some scale at a pedestrian level, so there will be walkways going up to each of the units, the townhome units, similar to the townhome development over on Riverwalk Drive, which is also in the Town Center east of the site. And here's another rendering. This is a perspective of those townhome units with the main apartment complex around the courtyard in the background, with the townhome units in the foreground along Park Center Drive, and this is the new driveway that would be built, constructing.
I have a quick question. So townhome units, it's still an apartment. It just looks like a townhome?
They would be rental, but they would, yes, they would just look like townhome units.
Also, before we go on from that slide, I see the obvious ingress egress. It's easy to see, getting in there to the part of the street area. Where are the front doors, I guess, for lack of a better term? Are they all on the interior?
They would actually be on the exterior along Park Center, so they're here. And I can go back, and it's kind of delineated here, so there'd be a connection here with these walkways, and then the front of the units.
Okay. But I'm talking about, like, the rest of the apartments?
There'd be several paths of travel. So one would be from the southern edge of the drive approach here, and here's the path of travel into the apartment buildings, and then there's another path of travel here.
Okay. But where's my front door going to be?
It faces courtyard.
Oh, so.
It faces courtyard.
So they, so most of the units face the courtyard. There's a walkway, a perimeter walkway. I can show you a rendering of that, and they'd all be accessible from this courtyard, excepting these units over here, which would be accessible from a hallway, a common hallway.
Okay. The reason why I ask that is because maybe until you walk there, it's not obvious where you would, and so now I'm a firefighter, or I'm a deputy sheriff, and I've got a 911 call to help somebody there. How in the world am I going to find out where I'm supposed to get into this place? Is there any signs? We talked about signs earlier.
I would defer that to the.
Am I right? Public safety, how many times have we gone to these kind of places, and you can't find your way around until somebody's expired?
Fortunately, we've made some changes in the submission of these in a PDF document that we use as pre-plans. That change has been adopted years ago. So when a new construction project like this finally comes to fruition, we actually have a pretty sophisticated map that pops up on our mobile data computers, iPads now, and we're able to kind of zoom in to see where our entry points are, where the hydrants are, electrical utilities. So it's a pretty significant benefit that we've implemented quite some time ago.
Okay. My next question then is, Captain, do you have that same system? So then deputy is just going to keep running around until somebody eventually finds where they're going to go. And so like a blind squirrel, one of these days, they may find a nut. My whole point here is that, except for the firefighters who have that sophisticated system, public safety is a concern. And unless it's obvious where the front door is, or where they're going to be able to go, or the numbering system, for instance, to get them there, and I don't know how long they want to stand at maybe the front and try and figure out a directory northeast and whatever. Is it going to be easy enough for finding where what I'm describing?
Perhaps do what we've done for other larger projects, is require a directory near the entrance with the site plan.
Yeah, I've seen those, and they don't usually work very well.
I'm uncertain as to how we could design it for identification of the units.
I know you guys design things, but you're not the emergency personnel running out there trying to find it. That's why I always ask about these kind of, you know, because it's, well, okay, all right. So I go inimimiimimo and find an orange door that I maybe go knock on. Are there elevators here?
No, they're all walk-up units. It's all uncommon stairs.
All right. Well, are you convinced it's going to work, and our public safety's going to find where to help people if they're called?
I would defer that to our Sheriff's Department.
So the way it works now, quite frankly, is when we go to a multifamily complex or a parma complex, we just look for the unit numbers of the addresses and hope that most of the time, they go sequentially, and sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't. And sometimes there's a directory we can use, and, yeah, it can be challenging sometimes.
Okay. Let me make this request then, okay? Are we going to have multiple addresses? Or is it just going to be one address and all the unit numbers?
So normally, we would assign a separate address on each building.
Okay.
And then with subunits.
So I want to make sure that each building has, is very clearly marked, and then the units, I want them also very clearly marked. Can I at least make that request?
Absolutely. We'll work with the applicant on that identification. We did so for several other developments, including Caribbean Way, and they have fairly large identification addresses. addresses, numerical addresses on the buildings.
Okay, and make sure landscape doesn't eventually.
And that's exactly where I was gonna go with it, and think with a future in mind, because oftentimes, you go to these places, and then, the trees, you know, 10 years later, block everything that delineates what it's, what building you're looking for, and especially in an emergency situation, that's not something that should be, that we can deal with, so no trees in front of where this is gonna go type of thing, I mean, just, you, you gotta, you gotta begin with the end in mind.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the bigger you can make something.
We'll work with the fire marshal on proper locations for these numerical, and then, we'll also coordinate with the sheriffs, make sure that they also.
Sorry, I didn't mean to try and play stump the staff here, but it just came up.
No, they're, they're great points.
No, but it should, it, we should be discussing this with, with, with public safety on any development.
Councilmember, it is run through both the sheriff and the fire, all, all these applications are, and so, but these are all great points, and certainly, we should take them, we will take them into account, but just, we do run it through both of those entities, and so.
Then you need to stand up more. Tell them, no, this is what we need.
Just take, take your gun out. Okay, thank you very much. Anything else before we go on?
Oh, yeah.
Probably should. Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying.
I'll let him keep finishing, yeah.
Okay, let's go.
So, the development will include a total of 114, 14 parking spaces, which exceeds the parking requirement of 108 spaces. Of those parking spaces, 56 will be covered, 17 will be dedicated to guest parking, and 97 will be resident parking. The guest parking are required to be stenciled and dedicated with signage.
Sorry, say that one more time, how many?
17 guest parking spaces, sir. And then, there will be a total of 19 electric vehicle charging stations in the facility. The project is exempt under CEQA, as the site is less than five acres, it's surrounded by development, and that's pursuant to the Class 32 exemption under the CEQA guidelines. At this time, staff would recommend that you conduct enclosed a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and approve the request for the development review, review permit by approving the resolution before you. The applicant is here to speak on behalf of the project, I think he'd like to speak about the project.
Thanks, we almost made it to the last slide before we went crazy. I was going to have public comments first.
Okay, we have three speakers, one of them is the applicant. Truth is the first one.
All right, lucky me, I got to find out about this project from the last Sandag meeting agenda, that the city's been given a 10-month extension to April 30th, 2024, for the CEQA analysis, and will receive money for this project under a Sandag Housing Acceleration Program grant. And so, because it's Sandag-related, I thought it would be stacked back, so I'm happy to see that this is not the case. On the cover page of this item, it says that this is a seven-building project, but everywhere else, it says it's an eight-building project. There's also a misspelling of the word toilet on page 152. Low-flow toilets, they definitely suck, but low-flow toilers are probably worse. So, this Westmark Partners 54-unit multi-family apartment complex on Park Center Drive, consisting of eight buildings, I think, three stories high, most units being either one or two bedrooms for rent, I find it strange that of the 54 units, three units will be townhome-style, but are still apartments somehow, and one of those is only one bedroom. I'm assuming that's for the property manager or something. I'm wondering who would wanna live near the Edgemore psychiatric facility, or near those possible future shacks for the homeless on the nearby county-owned land? Not my life. But I like the common areas, including amenities such as shade structures, picnic tables, fire pits, lounge areas, and an area for dogs. The animals that were not considered are cat-eating coyotes and carrot-eating bunnies. They'll be losing another piece of land with yet another development. The environmental status refers only to endangered, rare, or threatened species, and the biological resources report only refers to plants, not animals, so I don't know, somebody said to children, somebody, please think of the coyotes, I guess. It's good that this project is screened out from a vehicle miles traveled analysis, I like when anyone can avoid that. And there will be plenty of parking for these things called cars, I'm not sure how that fits into the Sandag regional plan, but that's okay. Seriously, I think the main concern would be traffic, what's gonna be done to mitigate that issue? I read the traffic engineer gave the green light, but I don't know about that, I don't know, I'm not trusting. Maybe if some sustainable slime-green bike lanes get thrown in somewhere, people's behavior will change, and probably not, but preferential parking for electric vehicles is ridiculous, and I read that in this item, I did not hear that mentioned in the presentation. I don't, preferential parking, that usually should be for people with disabilities, and disabilities was also not mentioned when you're talking about stairs. They all have stairs, there's no elevators, right? So, someone who's in a wheelchair, how do they get to the top floor? They can't rent at the top, that might fall under discrimination, maybe, with the state, I don't think they'd like that. You know, let the record show how expensive it is to build housing. Just the development impact fees for these apartments, they're not even single-family homes, they're just apartments, cost over $1.3 million. I think that's, I don't need to say the rest, this is gonna conclude my comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Halvax.
Go, Sean.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I came to speak on item number 11, and I came to a concert, I loved it, it was fantastic, that was great. My name is Sean Halvax, and I live at 10264 Palm Glen Drive, which is the foot of Palm Glen Drive. My wife and I have been there for 30-plus years, and we have family living in Santee, and we lived in Santee before that as well. We raised two boys, graduated from Santana and, and West Hills, both married with children now, so we love this community. We've seen Santee grow over the last 30-plus years, our property, there was, when the kids grew up, there was nothing between us and the river, and we used to bike and run all through the, the land between us and the, and the San Diego River. We are one of two single-family homes in the, in, pretty much in that entire community area, and we now share a property with the Edgemore Skilled Nursing Facility immediately to our south, our entire property line to the south. Although there remains some vacant land between Edgemore and, and the subject, and the, and the river, this is the last remaining undeveloped area in, in, in our neighborhood. I had the pleasure of meeting with the city planning department and engineering department last week, thank you very much. I went over our observations and, and questions regarding the development, and how it may impact particularly us around our property and the vistas, and so on and so forth. In summary, we do not oppose the development at all with, you know, with some very minor tweaks that we spoke to the city about, we believe are minor tweaks. The development will have the effect of reducing potential fire hazards in, in that, that acreage area, reduces some homelessness that goes on and off, as well as it provides, it looks like to be very nicely designed, and provides needed rental market in the area, so, so we, we understand all that, and it's gonna be developed, so, you know, I think it's in the right direction for us. We did, I wanna reiterate some of the observations, concerns that, that we had, my wife and I, that I did already share with, with, mostly with, with staff.
30 seconds.
Last week, and they have to do with quashing easements, that, there's an easement that flows along the southern border, there is, I, I used to think there was an offer of dedication through that same area, that may still need some research to be quashed before the development can, can continue. The apartments are three stories tall, 60 feet from the property line, and so, that vista from a few of the upper stories is gonna be right into our backyard and our dining room, so we're asking for everything to mitigate that.
Okay, the final speaker I have is Polly De Bartello.
Thank you.
Did you have anything specific you wanna say about, add, or do you wanna hear council comments and questions in the answer those, as part of your time?
Either to work with, however you prefer. I had nothing specific, just to reiterate, I think the council staff did a great job with the detailed report. We did everything we could possible to mitigate the design from impacting the neighbors, as was discussed, we pulled the building back 60 feet from the property line instead of the allowed 10. You know, we did everything possible to make this kind of an active residential addition to the community, it's half a mile from within education, community amenities, you know, everything you could think of, so we think this is a great spot for housing, so I don't really have much to say, but I'm happy to answer questions.
All right, we'll, we'll go ahead with council questions and comments, and Vice Mayor will go first.
Okay, thank you, yes. It's definitely a great design, so appreciated all the information. One of my questions that I, I did ask the city manager, which she clarified that, I think the road is Park Glen Drive, it, it doesn't go all the way through, so that's actually a good thing, because I, I was curious where we thought, even though we are exceeding parking space expecta, or requirements, which in Santee, we appreciate, and we actually.
Still.
Yeah. Where would somebody having, you know, a birthday party or some kind of gathering, where, where do you suspect they'll park? And so, that is a question that I have right now.
Yeah, so originally, in the existing town center specific plan, these parkways, like Park Center Drive, were planned without on-street parking. With our specific plan update, we're evaluating allowing for parking along these parkways in anticipation of these sorts of types of demands from development within the town center.
My next comment is about the landscaping plan, and I appreciate Councilmember McNellis' comment about, you know, landscaping, not blocking street numbers or apartment numbers, that's very important, but, you know, this, on Park Center Drive, there's landscaping that they're going to be responsible for, that, you know, this is where a lot of people drive into our community events, and I just wanna make sure that we condition this somehow. I don't like the idea of code enforcement having to go out to a property over and over and over again to try to get somebody to do the right thing, just because they get a project approved, and I'm not saying that this is gonna happen here, but unfortunately, there are some property owners where we spend, in my opinion, a ridiculous amount of time, you know, chasing the tail here, try to get what they should be doing, so moving forward, I think this is something that we should be addressed when we approve a property. And my, my final comment is that after grading is done, or at whatever point is appropriate, but before they start construction on the apartment comp, building, I would like to see the eight-foot wall in place to protect the residential homes, I think it's one or two homes there, before construction starts. I, I think that's the best way to move forward with something like this.
With the precise grading.
Yes, and then, and then build the eight-foot wall, so they don't have to deal with that. I, I, I don't want it at the end of the project, I want it at the beginning of the project.
And regarding the landscaping, so we will require notice of restrictions, and we also require them to bond for the landscaping, and they have to maintain it before we can release the bond. We've had properties that, for example, the, the Star Car Wash on Mission Gorge Road, staff worked for a number of years on ensuring that their landscaping was thriving and was planted according to plan, and it took about maybe three or four, four years for us to release the landscape bond. And right, if you go now, you can see the results of that, so with new development, staff does try to ensure that the landscaping is thriving and well-maintained.
What if 10 years from now, though, I mean, you release the bond, and then 10 years?
So, that's where the notice of restrictions would come into place, we could, the city could, at a worst-case scenario, the city could go in and complete the work and place a lien on the property, if it does become really deficient, but of course, we try to work with the property owner to address those deficiencies.
Councilmember, there is a specific provision in the resolution that gives the city the right, but not the obligation, to go in, maintain, and then, charge, essentially charge back against the property for that work, so it's, it's an added benefit that makes code enforcement significantly easier, because in the approvals, that provision is there. I mean, obviously, we wouldn't wanna do that often, but if it gets to a point where we have to, we have that right, and it's not, it's something that we could then collect against the property.
Okay, is that something new or newer? Because we have properties that don't.
It's definitely newer, I mean, I think in, in newer development, it's a relatively standard condition now, but, you know, yeah, we wish we had had it in the 80s and 90s, but we certainly have it more recently.
Okay, thank you.
To expand on that, then, maybe make some clarity, because, so, what you're talking about, Michael, is that we have a bond, but the bond is typically only for one, one year, or it's released after one year, if they meet all the conditions, right?
If it's established.
So, obviously, it can go longer, but if they do, you release it?
We would release it, yes.
Okay, so what is their obligation for all that frontage after that? All those trees on the frontage, all those, all those improvements are accepted by the city, right?
Yes, so they have to continue to maintain the landscaping onsite and along their frontage in accordance with their conditions of approval and the proof site plan.
From property line to property line, you know, that whole width, they have to maintain all the street frontage too?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Okay.
That would be correct, sir.
Anything, Councilmember McNellis?
No, she actually asked my, asked my question that I always concern, well, actually, okay, I got one more. Of the, of the 19 electrical parking spaces, how many of those are guest parking?
So, they're required to provide two of those for guests.
Okay, so 17 are for residents.
So, the remainder would be for residents, correct?
And of the 17 that are for residents, is this designated parking, or is this open parking if you're a resident within the development?
So, the only, the resident would be open, but the guest parking would be reserved and, and demarcated and signed, because that is a city requirement. So, it would be up, it would be the option of the actual apartment operator, whether they want to designate the resident parking or not, but it isn't a condition of approval imposed by the city.
Okay, that's, that's where things get dicey, because you get one resident that has, you know, mom and dad, two kids, that are of driving age, so now you got four.
And perhaps the, the applicant could shed a little more light on that matter, perhaps they have an idea of whether or not they'll designate the parking.
So, City Councilman is Polly De Bartello, lead designer on the project. What, the question you're talking about is the, the placement of electrical vehicle charging stations across 114 car spaces.
That's one of the questions, yes.
Right. So, what we're seeing, the trend in multifamily housing, is that the code requirement is being provided, but there, most developments are anticipating adding future EV charging stations, so it becomes a little bit of a, for the first 17, it becomes a little bit of a management issue. There's a condition that the townhomes, which have their own garage for cars, have EV stations within them, so there's, there's actually 17, not 19. So, the remaining 15 would be scattered throughout the site, and it becomes a management issue, first come, first served, who wants an EV station assigned to them at that time. But what we're seeing, like I said, the trend in multifamily housing, is that more and more developments are adding EV charging all the time, so it's about ensuring through the building permit process, and working with the electrical engineer, and, and municipalities and so on, to ensure that capacity is brought to the site, to expand upon the EV charging as, as needed over time, so kind of running the capability, and then coming in at a later date and actually mounting, you know, charging stations.
Okay, and then, now to address how parking is going to be designated here.
So, as staff reported, we're in excess of the current code requirement.
Which I think is too little to begin with, so.
Right, but it's a code requirement, it's something to work from, right? So, we have a requirement to meet, and we look, we did our best here to exceed that as much as we could. So, it will be assigned through a management system based on, you know, whether it's a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom unit.
So, it will be assigned?
Correct.
Okay, that was the question.
But, but, but there's flexibility within the management of that, like I said, if someone.
Fair enough, if somebody doesn't have a car, then they don't need a spot.
Correct, or if someone requires an EV charging station because they're just moving in, you know, we can, that can be managed.
So, it is assigned parking?
Correct.
Within the development?
Correct, and as staff said, guest spaces will be labeled as such.
Okay, so if I've got, like, once again, yep, mom and dad had two kids, they moved in, neither kid drove when they first moved in. in, neither kid drove when they first moved in, a year later, they both drive now. How are they addressing that?
So we only have three, sorry, two three-bedroom units, of which really, that's the kind of scenario that you're talking about. The majority.
Not necessarily.
Fifty percent of the units here are one-bedroom.
Fifty percent are one-bedroom?
The strong remainder of that is two-bedroom. And so in 54 units being proposed, there are only two three-bedroom units for that scenario, and each three-bedroom unit with that excess could be assigned a guaranteed two-car spaces. But again, it's a management system that, as the designer of the project, I, you know, there's layers involved between now, the building permit process, and the management and leasing of these 54 apartments.
Okay, I mean, I get, I gotta think about things going into it, but if it is all truly designated parking, you have to have a parking space designated to you in order to park within the development.
Sure.
Otherwise, they're gonna end up using the guest parking, even though they live there, they're gonna use the guest parking.
Understood.
And then if somebody actually has a guest, I guess we just can't visit.
Understood, it's a challenging site, there's no street parking available.
There is no street parking.
Which is why we did our best to exceed every requirement. So in addition to exceeding the vehicle parking requirement, we exceed the motorcycle parking requirement, and even though there is not a bicycle parking requirement, we provide 12 bicycle spaces onsite as well.
Okay, so this 114 parking spaces, that does not include motorcycle parking spaces, does it?
No, that's.
Okay.
Motorcycle.
Want to make sure we're.
Hundred percent, absolutely.
Not trying to skirt something by calling it something else.
You're absolutely right to ask.
All right. Yeah, I still have consternation about this, but it's, you know, what are you gonna do? You gotta figure out a way to bring it in. I appreciate the fact that it is assigned parking and assigned parking only, not just, hey, whatever's open, figure it out, because that's where it truly gets taken advantage of, and that's where fights start.
I understand. All we can do is work with the code and look to exceed that as best we can. And so I think one of the important things about why this is an interesting site, a unique site or opportunity for housing, is its proximity to all of those community amenities that.
I totally get all that, and I appreciate it.
Promote walkability and bikeability and the use of, you know.
However, we use our cars still.
I understand.
I mean, there's no way around it, you can say it, you can be whatever you want, say that we're not gonna use cars, we're all gonna walk to work, we're all gonna bike to work, it's not true. People use their cars still in Southern California, especially out in the suburbs of a community like Santee. We don't, we're not downtown, we're not in high stories downtown where you work downtown, you live downtown, you take a bus from a block or two.
So I think, it sounds like that's a question for the municipal code and the parking minimums that the code actually requests developers provide.
Well, I.
Because we're in excess of that.
I gotta pose this for.
Understood.
If you want to go down that road.
No, I'm just saying, we did our best to exceed all the requirements, every requirement.
I appreciate that, but that's why I'm questioning it.
Understood.
All right, you know, for me, the thing about the EV chargers is the fact that you have somebody that parks in an EV charger, it's, you know, they have to have a charge, a car that needs to be charged, first of all, otherwise they can't park there. And then the way the code actually reads is they can only be there while charging the vehicle.
Right.
So I don't know, I guess, Sean, that the difference is that if it's an assigned parking space, you have a right to be there longer, just like you're in your garage. So I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with that kind of thinking, and, you know, then, especially if it's guest parking, though, it definitely still have to comply with those rules. And so, because even though it's private property, the sheriff's can still run in there and, you know, sight and do whatever they need to do, and, you know, they could be getting calls all afternoon long, saying, hey, somebody's parked in a EV charger and it's been there a day and a half or something. So I, you know, that just reduces the amount of parking, is all.
I agree.
Yeah, so anyways, but I do like this, and I think we should be looking at some way to, in the future, make parking out there on Park Center Drive. Maybe instead of planting trees right there in that parkway, we take and, you know, change it out to put a curb next to the sidewalk and make it parking. Seems like the easiest answer, because then it actually answers two things. One is that people can park there legally when they go to the concert, and then also if there's overflow from the, you know, building, people can park there, too, because not much of a walk to get inside, just a thought, so. But, I don't know, I like to think about it before we do all that work out there, and then decide later on to come back and change it, so. All right, any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the meat, the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Anybody?
Second.
Thank you. All right, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, sir. Thanks, counsel. Hold on there. Okay, that takes us to new business, item number 12, which is resolution receiving the 2023 City of Santee Development Impact Fee Report and making certain findings based on that report pursuant to the Santee Municipal Code and California Government Code. Heather.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. I will be presenting the first City of Santee Development Impact Fee Report. So for a little bit of background on the purpose of this report, the City Council adopted the most recent impact fee ordinance in 2019, ordinance 565. Impact fee ordinance, or the impact fee ordinance was amended in May 2023 by ordinance 612. The amended language states that the Director of Finance is required to prepare and make available to the public an annual report on the city's impact fees. It requires the Director to bring forward information regarding those fees consistent with Government Code Section 66006B. It requires the Director to conduct a recurring eight-year impact fee nexus study. This item presented tonight satisfies the annual reporting requirement, and the nexus study is currently being prepared and will be presented to City Council in the future. In order to be in compliance with ordinance 612, the Director prepared and made available to the public the City of Santee Development Impact Report 2023 included, which was included in the agenda packet. The impact fee report is posted on the city's website and notice of availability posted at standard city locations. In addition, this notice was mailed to the two parties who had previously requested mailed notices. So the next few slides will go through parts of the report. We'll start with the development impact fees and the purpose, the purpose of the fees, description and the purpose. Public facilities fees, this is, this is for the installation of passive and active park facilities and for the construction of 65,000 square feet of community buildings. Traffic signal fee, installation of traffic signals identified from the city's traffic signal needs list. Traffic mitigation fee, installation of needed improvements identified in the circulation element of the city's general plan. Drainage fee, installation of drainage improvements identified in the city's latest master drainage study. Park and Lou fees for the acquisition and development of park facilities and the Regional Transportation Congestion Improvement Program, or RTCIP, fee, which is for the installation of improvements to the regional arterial system. Each fee is collected and maintained in a separate account, and the CIP budget is used to prioritize and allocate these fees. This next, next slide here is the 2324 fee schedule. You've got the public, you've got the, I'm sorry, the development impact fees listed there across the top in separate columns. The first part of this, of this report or this schedule is the, the diff fees per resident, per residential unit, these are charged on a per-unit basis. At the bottom, development impact fees for commercial and industrial, and these are charged on a square foot basis. This next, next schedule is the schedule of fund balances. This is as of June 30th, 2023, these are unaudited numbers at this time. The first line there are your, are the revenues for the fiscal year, expenditures follow, you've got your, your net revenue or revenue over or under expenditures, and at the bottom are your fund balance numbers for each of the development impact fees. This next schedule is the project identification. This schedule demonstrates a list of public improvements for which fees are programmed, which fees and how much were expended, and what the approximate dates of project commencement and completion are. In the first column there, you've got the, you've got the project name. Next column is the project phase, and this could be either active, planned, or complete. You have an estimated project beginning date and an estimated project completion date and an estimated project cost. The next section of columns are the development impact fees information. The first one there is the budget, the fiscal year 2020, 2223 budget, and then the fiscal year expense. And then the last column is the estimated percent of the project that's funded with the development impact fees. Your first, your first fee there is public facilities, and you've got your, your public facilities funded projects underneath, same with the other fees. The next one is traffic signal.
I have a question about the Big Rock Park restroom improvements. I remember from the CIP budget that the estimated cost for that area was $777,000, so is this 388.5 a new estimate?
No, so it's funded 50/50, so half public facilities and half park and Lou. So we'll see, we'll see the other half on the next, on the next slide.
Okay, so my suggestion last time at the CIP meeting was to take out the word restroom, because it was encompassing more than just the restroom, and call it Big Rock Park Improvements?
You're right, I think I missed that, I apologize. Next slide. So then, the next, the next development impact fee is traffic mitigation, all the projects funded with traffic mitigation, and then drainage, park and Lou, and then the RTCIP. So within, within the resolution, it states that the City Council, at a public meeting, has reviewed the impact fee report and hereby makes the following findings for the unexpended funds remaining. That the purposes of the fees remain valid, appropriate, and necessary. There is a reasonable relationship between the fee and the purpose for which it is charged. All sources and amounts of funding to complete the financing of incomplete projects has been identified. All remaining balances in the impact fee accounts are necessary to complete incomplete improvements as identified in the CIP and the impact fee report, and that approximate dates for funding incomplete improvements have been designated. Staff recommendation is to review the information in the impact fee report, accept the impact fee report, and adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Speaker slips?
We have one speaker, truth.
Hello, on page 200 of the agenda packet, the word transfers is misspelled, I'm being an editor here, sorry. Item reference, California Government Code Section 66006, and I say that sounds like some state lucky numbers, all right. Item says, local agencies that have developed an impact fee program may adopt a capital improvement program indicating the approximate location, size, and timing of projects. And that's how we arrive at what I have heard are called wish lists. The City of Santee adopts a capital improvement program every two years, which means I was very lucky to catch a wish list shooting star, lucky in me. City collects impact fees from new development to pay for the cost of constructing public, constructing public facilities. So let's mention an example of the various fees. The development impact fees per single-family residential unit. Public facilities, over $8,000. Traffic signal, $470. Traffic mitigation, over $4,500. Park and Lou, over $9,700. And Regional Transportation Congestion Improvement Program, over $2,700. And nobody likes those numbers, that's why I read them fast, so for a total, that means a total fee for over one single house is over $25,000. And that RTCIP money gets spent, however Sandag says it does, which means people from other cities get a say in what happens here. And that's some of that taxation without representation that I'm always talking about. The total fee plus interest made for the city is over $2.1 million, and the total out to projects is over $1 million, less than 50%. Someone could check my math on that. But getting away from numbers, this report mentions passive and active park facilities, so I learned that a passive park is generally a park without sports facilities. I like when I can learn something. All amounts remaining in the public facilities fund are currently programmed for that community center project. Fifty-four, sorry, 64% of it paid with development impact fees, you know, you want nice things, they cost money. To sum it up, an impact fee ordinance is what goes into the cost of building homes. And all fees go up every year, for inflation, of course, and that's one of the reasons why housing is so expensive to build and buy. But hey, here's, here's one of my solutions. The alternative would be if neighborhoods could build their own facilities and had voluntary contributions to projects rather than fees and taxes. But of course, that would be a very different world than what we are in now, wouldn't it? Better than a connected smart city world, though, I promise you that. So I'm, I mean, I'm not really against the fees, I just wish it was a different reality. And so sometimes when people ask me, well, what's your solution for this? Well, I don't have one, because what I'm looking at is something that I do not support in general. And so if you want, to have something different, you have to have a different mindset, and if you're not even there, you're working your government job, then you will not even understand where I'm coming from.
Well, it's interesting, you mentioned Sandag in that one, truth, because as we were seeing this report, I couldn't help to think that compared to the reports that we do get at Sandag on the capital improvements and other things, this report was actually much easier to read and actually explained what was done and what wasn't done. So for that, I think we're way ahead of the ballgame there, so. Council comments or questions?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Have a motion as second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Make sure you put down Ron Hall voter note on that.
For the first report ever, thank you, Heather. It's the report, all reports will be held to from now on.
All right, that takes us to non-agenda public comment.
No speakers, sir.
All right, then, let's go to City Council Reports. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I do have some things to, I have a question, actually. Item number five, which I pulled, and the last item 12, lead me to my comment of the night, which is, parking situation in town center as it relates to the ball field, sports plex, and YMCA is, and then the surrounding neighborhoods are heavily impacted, it's, you know, people are using the area, but that's great, they're recreating down there, that's great, but we have a parking issue down there. And so since in item 12, the community center and the park and Lou fees are actively being spent on the community center project, it looks like, perhaps we can fast-track the parking lot that we know we're going to need to add anyway as part of the community center in front of the YMCA and do that now, or sooner rather than later, and bring that back as soon as possible, so we can alleviate some of that park, some of the parking issues down there. So that's a suggestion. And then, as far as reports, we have slumps tomorrow, and Heather will be the star of that. I attended Heartland Fire while John was on vacation with his wife Laura, one scheduled Sandag meeting and one unscheduled Sandag meeting. They were both very interesting, and my eyes were rolling. But offices, one of the things that I did find interesting is that Sandag is actually looking for ways to save money on their office space, and it is a good market to be negotiating those items right now with so much open office space downtown. And so potentially, it could save 30... And, um, so potentially it could save $30 million a year. I know. Was it a year? I think it was a year. Thirty million dollars.
I don't know if you were there.
Well, it was a continued item, so it was.
It's okay, they've already got it spent.
Sure.
Let's get transit to the bill.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna focus on, um, that, you know, at least they're looking for a way to, uh, potentially save significant taxpayer money on that. Um, and then that leads me to the, the closed session, which what I can say it was, um, what I can say is the discussion was about hiring the internal auditor, which is sorely needed at Sandag, and there was, um, consensus around that item. So I hope the person that was offered the job accepted, but we, I don't know. I don't know if you've heard anything either. But an internal auditor at Sandag is desperately needed. Um, I attended the Borders Committee after one of the Sandag meetings. Oh, it was interesting at the Sandag meeting. I, one of them was a workshop. It was workshop number three on all the different cities and the counties' priorities for our regional transportation plan for 2025. And, um, at one of them, with Truth there, we were doing monopoly money, which was just crazy. Uh, it, it, we, we used monopoly money to put it on different things that we felt should be a priority, but of course, you know, like Mayor Vos of Poway and myself have different priorities than downtown San Diego. So it was just really weird, and I don't think it really went anywhere. And then the, the last workshop, which John was there, and when I walked in, he was advocating strongly for the 52, which I thought was wonderful. Um, I thought his group, their table had, um, were the most organized. Um, I, I thought that the staff heard what their group, um, thought was important to the region more than the other two groups. There, there was a total of three groups, so I thought you got, you did a really great job with that. We also advocated for the 67, and, you know, there's a fire in Ramona tonight, and things like that just will always concern me. So hopefully, uh, they heard us with the 67 as well, and with the fire, um, fire safety issue. And then, um, the last thing, uh, the Kiwanis put on, um, a, a law enforcement award night at Meadowbrook, and, um, I want to congratulate, uh, senior volunteer Bonnell for winning for the City of Santee. She's a lovely, lovely lady and, um, impressive resume and just so sweet. So that was, you know, as far as city council things go, Sandag's not fun, that was fun.
Well, I'm gonna differ with you on that. I always have fun at Sandag. It's only because of the things we get to.
Like two root canals or something?
Matter of fact, yeah, I'm going in next week for one. Um, it, it, you know, it's, it's funny because, uh, two people that are probably so diametrically opposed to things are, uh, Councilmember Jack Schu from La Mesa and myself. And so when I talked about the Highway 52 and the needs and all these different things, and he actually stood there and he goes, you know, I agree with, uh, Mayor Minto. I threw my hands in the air and I said, whoa, stop. Wait a minute, we agree on something? And, uh, of course, that's what makes it fun, is being able to, you know, mess with Jack. Um, so, but, uh, it, uh, is very interesting on what's going on down there. And we were talking the other day, and, uh, you know, we just went through our capital improvements program, uh, budget hearings, and then, you know, our operating budget hearings, and, uh, learning about, you know, different, you know, pots of money and where you can put things, uh, what we really can afford and can't afford. And we came to the conclusion that I know as long as I've been there, Sandag has never talked about a capital improvements program or an operational budgets program. They just put everything together. And so it's easy to kind of maybe hide things if you do that. So I, so when I go in, I'm gonna be starting to talk about, how come we don't have a separation of capital improvements and separation of operations? Because I think if we did that, we're gonna find out that we're way fat in the operations, or I should say flat with a silent L, right? In our operations budget.
Or a P H A T.
Or a P H A T. Um, so, so I, so it's really interesting when you start looking at all these, uh, dynamics and how you maybe could do some things different. But we also, was interesting is at our table, we were the only ones in the room that talked about 67. Even those, uh, north inland, I'm gonna call them, cities didn't even talk about 67, which is where I would expect a heavy, uh, conversation going on. So, so we find ourselves looking out for a lot of the rest of the county from East County because I think we really get it. We know that we have to have a 12594 change because it's what clogs up traffic. And if they're gonna talk about the greenhouse gas thing, well, you know, all that clogged up stuff is gonna cause greenhouse gases, so why isn't it a priority? Anyhow, that's another discussion. Um, anyways, uh, next month, we're going to the League of California Cities, um, annual conference, and, uh, things are going on there. Oh, I forgot about, uh, Sandag. The other thing is that, uh, we all know, uh, Hassan Akkara attended his resignation. It's good for December 29th. Um, and the reason for that is because he had to give us like a 120-day notice or something like that. And, um, and nobody knows the real reason, but I think it's because, personally, I think it's because he's not gonna be able to continue in the same way he used to. Because even some of our colleagues that we, uh, you know, we call the Democrats that think they're gonna be opposed or in favor of everything he does, they're not necessarily actually in favor of it. So he's fighting two, two sides of the battle now, and I think he's done with that. Uh, but, uh, we're gonna go through a process of a, uh, nationwide search, and then we'll have a committee to review all that, and then, you know, just like every other, uh, you know, and this time we're not gonna let Ron be there because he's the one that voted on Hassan last time. And, uh, did I say that out loud? I'm sorry. And, um, so, uh, so they'll, they'll bring somebody in and, and, uh, let the board have a final vote on it. We'll see how that goes. But, uh, other than that, I, I really don't have much else. Dustin?
In value of time, no report, sir.
Councilmember McNellis?
I have the same report as Councilmember Trotter.
Were you guys copying off each other's tests or what?
Mayor Minto, do you wanna do the reappointment also?
Oh, see, I got talking so much, I forgot. And I do have a note here. Okay. Well, it's time once again to, um, reappoint the Gillespie Field Airport Committee, um, member who represents us here at Santee, and I intend to, uh, make James Sly that, uh, repeat to the, uh, committee. Is anybody in opposition to that? Okay, so.
In the future, I'd like more discussion on that.
Okay.
Prior to.
Okay. Sounds good. Yeah, by the way, they kind of let us usually know at the last minute. So we'll, we'll try and get on that sooner. Um, so anyways, anything else? Okay. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, first off, I want to remind everybody, we do have a concert tomorrow night. I think we only have two left, so everybody show up at Town Center Park. It's gonna be a great time. And, uh, as was previously mentioned here at the city council meeting, we are getting ready to go live with our new online permit system. It's gonna be, uh, an interesting time period for the city. Staff is nervous, but we are gonna be moving forward in a little bit of a challenge. Our data at City Hall is going to be pulled by our consultant on August 18th. So that following week, we're gonna be still operating our planning and building and engineering departments, but we will be taking care of permits that come over the counter that are really essential for people moving forward. Their business licenses getting pulled, their, their, um, their building permits are expiring. Somebody has a hot water heater that's blown a gasket, there's a hole in the roof. We'll take care of all of those things as needed for citizens, and we're gonna be having all of the larger, major applications, uh, move forward the following week when we actually have our new system ready to go live. Um, on August the 29th, we will have the ability for everybody to come in and try out the new online system, either at a new kiosk at the front counter or online at home. Uh, we're really excited about it. We do have the opportunity for our consultant to be here to assist staff and the public to move through this process on August the 29th, 30th, and 31st. Um, there is a report that we brought back to the city council on how all this went and what our process has been. Uh, in the month of September, we'll give an update for the council to know how everything has processed. But we do want to make sure that we are getting word out to people, if you have a major project that you want to bring, we're hoping you can wait one week and bring that forward during the time when our new system is live. Uh, it will be August the 29th. We'll have a, um, soft opening. I know staff doesn't want me to tell everybody that, but we'll have kind of a soft opening on, uh, August the 28th so that our staff can get ready. And just so council's aware, staff will be working the weekend of August 26th and 27th with the new system, once they bring the data to us, to try to get things up and running and make sure that we are truly ready. Uh, everybody has a great desire to make sure this system works for not only council's priorities, council's desires, for the development community and for staff and for the community as a whole. So we're very excited, uh, and we'll be putting out this information for the rest of the community as well through Facebook, social media, on the city website. We'll be sending emails out to everybody who's got a permit that's in process, uh, and the development community, so they're all aware of that, um, moving forward. And I want to thank staff and challenge staff. This is gonna work. We're gonna make this happen. So, um, thank you very much, council.
City attorney?
No report.
All right. That takes us to, uh, closed session. I have number 13, conference with labor negotiators. Item number 14, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. All right, that brings us back to regular session from closed session pertaining to item number 13,